Whatever makes you happy, Kirk.
Okay, good morning. I'll call to order the March 7th, 2022, regular meeting of the Haywood County Board of Commissioners, and our first order of business will be a pledge of allegiance, and then our Pastor Josh Frazier will come forward for the invocation. Welcome, Josh. So if anyone would stand for the pledge.
Let's pray. God in heaven, we thank you for another day to be able to live, live and breathe, to be on this earth, to be able to make decisions. And thank you for each one of these people that are here today for the various reasons. We know that each one of them are tasked with very important things that they need to do to help our community and our society. And I pray that you would give wisdom and guidance in all decisions that will be made. I pray that we would seek camaraderie and togetherness for all that we do and make sure that the place that we live continues to be the best place on earth. Thank you for the many blessings that we're able to have and receive, and just the opportunity and the ability to live where we live. We pray on this in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Josh. Our next order of business is public hearings. We have none, and then the next will be public comment. Does any, I don't have anyone signed up. Would anyone like to address the board this morning? Yeah, I'll close the public comment session. We'll move on to constituent concerns. Brian, you had mentioned one about Chris.
Yep. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Chris is going to come up and talk about the Household Hazardous Waste Day we're holding.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'd like to formally announce a Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day on March 26th. Haywood County has partnered with CWS to have this collection day. We've done this several times in the past. The last couple of years, we were unable to get a hazardous waste collection team there that would be some type of subcontractor. In this case, we're going to be working with EcoFlow on March 26th. The event will be at the Materials Recovery Facility off of Jones Cove Road. Some of the items that are included in that are aerosol-type, mixed solvents, acid-based products, any type of wet paint-related product, as long as it's not dried up. So in addition to that, there's some other items that we collected the Murph typically that most people think may be household hazardous waste. Items like batteries, the lead acid, the alkaline, the Ni-Cad, the lithium, any type of propane tanks, fire extinguishers, oil filters, antifreeze, motor oil. Those are things we normally collect, but a lot of folks think of those as household hazardous waste. So we'll, we'll be collecting those in addition to the true household hazardous waste items.
Anybody have any questions? What did, I'm sorry, I was taking some notes. What about paint?
If it's wet paint, like you have a portion of a gallon, if it's wet, it's considered a hazardous waste item. If it's dried up with some type of oil dry or cat litter where it's become a solid, then it is not considered a hazardous waste item.
So can they bring paint that day?
You can bring wet paint, yes.
Okay. And that's down at the Murph?
At the Murph, March 26th.
Is that the only pledge?
Beginning at noon.
Oh, at noon?
At noon on March 26th. It's going to be a little bit difficult to coordinate this effort along with normal operations. In the past, we've had these events on a Sunday when the facility's closed, but the subcontractors that collect and dispose of the waste no longer work on Sundays. So we're going to have to work this in on the Saturday, March 26th. We'll be sending out a press release, two, sometime later this afternoon.
That'll go from 12 to 5?
Yes.
Where will that be at the Murph? Do you know yet?
It'll be kind of through the parking lot. We're going to try to separate the normal operation from a kind of a drive-through. There'll be different stations depending on what you have, different bins that you will put the aerosols or the paints or those type of things in, and just try to make a circle where they'll circle in and out down on the lower level. We'll try to keep normal operations up on the upper level.
Anybody have any questions at all? Because I'm going to put that in my calendar.
Yes, please do.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Anybody have any other constituent concerns?
Yes, I had one about the creek after the flooding in Harmony Creek, and I got county staff on it. And the gentleman was very happy that Mr. Ward, you and some of your staff responded, and so I'm sure you're working with him on that. And also, just as a, just as a matter of public information, Thursday at 6:00 PM, there's going to be a meeting at Crestview Baptist Church, all the players, Haywood County, FEMA, North Carolina Emergency Management, all the players that's been involved with the flood cleanup and flood mitigation at Crestview Church at 6 o'clock, I believe, Thursday. Is that correct, Brian? If any of the community members have any questions, or there's some people that still maybe fell through the cracks, that'll be an opportunity to address the problem. And also, I got notice from a resident in Crusoe that kind of been, I mean, here we are several months after the flood, and the North Carolina group is back here in the office. They were actually able to help this guy, and he was so happy. It had a, had a bridge that was damaged, and so, you know, they're still working on it. If you've been passed over, you might want to come Thursday and see if there's any recourse for your problem, if you still got it. And it's going to be an ongoing thing. I mean, there's, I remember after 2004, it took years to clean up, and this is going to be even, even more. The cleanup is still, still pretty phenomenal if you go driving up through there. So I know there's a lot of community people involved, and they're wanting to, to clean up, and I appreciate the community members that's wanting to organize a grassroots efforts to, to help some of this flood damage, so.
Now, just one thing to add, what Commissioner Long said, what he is talking about on Thursday is at Crestview Baptist Church. That'll be from 6 to 8. Is that right? I think 6 to 8. So anybody out there that needs any help or wants to find out what they can do, they can either come up here across from where we meet at in the courthouse and meet with a mitigation team, or they can meet at Crestview Baptist Church this coming Thursday night. So just to put that out there.
Anything?
No, I don't have anything.
Same thing. I had several calls this week, and it's unfortunate. I think folks really, really realized that the help, the end of the help was near. So I'm interested to see what we hear on Thursday night because they're still, it's still really bad up there. Great progress has been made, but it's still, a lot of help needs to be made.
I would just say, I was standing in line at the bank one day, I guess, week before last, and there was some guys in front of me talking about taxes, property taxes. And I was kind of like, well, maybe I need to slink away and stuff, but they were talking about how reasonable the taxes were in Haywood County. I think he said he paid $1,200 on his property, and he was, had come from an area where he paid $6,000 to $7,000 for a similar property. So, but he was talking with another, a couple of other guys there, and they were just really talking about how low the taxes are in our county. And I know Kirk has heard that from people that move here from other areas, that they're pleasantly surprised with how much their property taxes are going to be in our community. So anyway, give y'all a pat on the back about that. So just thought I would mention that. So I'll move on to discuss administrative reports, and Brian's going to introduce our new county employees.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Through February 7th, we had several new employees. I'll start with Health and Human Services, Richard Hathcox, Savannah Yummet, Deborah Hennessy, Chelsea Wrangle, Amber Moore, and Belinda Smith. The Sheriff's Office, Leonard Hefner, Rebecca Shelton, Natasha Snyder, the Library, Matthew Phillips, and in Technology and Communications, Alexander Rogers. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And welcome to all those new employees. Okay, our next order of business is discussion or adjustment to agenda. I do not have anything. Does any other commissioner have anything they want to mention? Okay, I'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions about the consent agenda, any of the two items on the consent agenda? Yeah, I'll move, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, you want to pose. Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to the regular agenda. The first is the request consideration of occupancy tax penalty waiver request from Metalark Motel for the months of July, August, September, and October 2021 in the amount of $1,374.91. Welcome, Lynn. Director Lynn Collins here this morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. As you will recall, any penalty waivers that are over $1,000, we bring to the commission for consideration. This was sent in to us, and we took it before our group and our board, and they do not recommend waiving this penalty. The reason that was in the, the request was that they had implemented COVID restrictions and lost a lot of their employees, and they were very short on help. However, on the TDA Board, we have a lot of accommodations, people sitting on that board, and they felt like that if they were still able to rent the rooms, clean the rooms, and re-rent them, and collect, you know, to pay for the rooms, that they should be able to pay the tax. So.
Kirk, you're on that board. Did you want to make any comments?
I'm not on the specific board that made this decision, the Finance Board, but it was brought up at the TDA Board at the last meeting, and everyone was in support of that decision. I mean, customarily, over the years, you, they give certain waivers. If no one's had a waiver before, sometimes they give them a waiver, but they usually look at the circumstances and weigh those out to determine whether it's reasonable or not. So I guess she explained the basis why they said they were not going to waive it, so.
So the TDA Board was not, did not want us, did not want to waive that?
Correct.
And they would, recommendation to us?
Yes.
That we would not waive it. Okay. Okay, so any discussion on that?
I have, I don't recall us waiving an occupancy tax for those reasons before. Lynn, do you remember if we've done that?
No, not to the best of my knowledge that I recall.
Okay. Okay, so if no one makes a motion to waive it, then it just stands, I guess?
I think we probably have to take action. I move that, that we not grant the waiver request by Metalark Motel to waive the occupancy tax for the months of July, August, September, due to the, their explanation as to why they needed a waiver.
Or second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Appreciate the good work you're doing, too. Okay, our next order of business is the request approval to remove, to move the EMS, train, I'm sorry, to move the remaining EMS shifts to, on the 24 hours on, 48 hours off schedule, to 24 on, 72 hour off, with mostly scheduled training days, and in so doing, authorizing seven new positions within EMS. We have Travis here this morning. Go ahead, Travis, and then.
Yeah. Good morning, Commissioners. Again, here before you to request those positions, and then doing so, moving all of our shifts on to the same schedule of 2472. I did a presentation, I guess, probably last month, talking to y'all about what that looks like, what that looks like for overtime for our folks. And to not go into the full presentation again, just to summarize, basically what we're wanting to do is to add consistency because we have folks that work shifts that actually do not have a dedicated supervisor. They have one, but they may actually only work for them maybe once or twice a month on that shift. And the other side of that, the extraordinary amount of scheduled overtime that folks are scheduled and have mandatory overtime on the 2448 schedule of upwards of, right at 900 hours, and that's mandatory. That's part of the schedule. What we want to do in order to fix the consistency issues, reduce the hours of mandatory overtime down to a reasonable amount, still higher, but with cutting almost 400 hours of those 900 hours out, adding a scheduled once-a-month training day for each of those shifts as a part of this 2472 schedule, and just trying to prolong the, the career and the better health and well-being of our employees. Using an example, I know there's been concern about, you know, folks losing money because of the losing those overtime hours. For an example, in the month of March, we had over 130 shifts when the schedule was built for the month of March to cover. We have part-timers, but we don't have that much part-time. So there's always going to be opportunity for people to pick up overtime as they see fit and on their schedule, as opposed to us telling you that you're going to have overtime. So you can pick and choose your overtime at this point and still be able to make some extra money and still have a better balanced life, at least the way I see it and the way our mental health professionals see it, and trying to just take care of our employees. So anybody have any questions about what we're trying to do?
I was, I was talking to, if we put this off for two weeks, is that going to hurt anything if we do that? Jennifer was wondering if we could table it.
I'll do whatever you wish. The biggest thing is trying to get the budget prepared that Brian's working on to make sure that we have that aligned, because it is going to make some changes on that side when he, when he presents his budget package.
Let me just expand on it a little bit. I think I've talked to you and, and some of the employees, and I've talked to Brian as well, but when, so the employment study was designed to bring our, or implemented to bring our employees to market wages. And ideally, if we had been able to implement this shift change in October, when the market study was implemented on all of our employees, it might have been a smoother transition. So my, I don't work EMS, and everybody should be very thankful that I don't. But what makes me nervous about it is that we have a handful, it's not very many, but we have a handful of tenured EMS employees, department employees, that would see a pay decrease, not from where they are today, back to October, but where they would have been in October with this shift change. And so I think that's my struggle, is that it, I, I'm 100% on board that the new shift would be a better shift for their well-being, but I don't want to, I don't want to negatively impact someone's income because of timing. And so had we been backed up on administratively with all the things y'all had going on at that time, I think that would have maybe been a little smoother process. So I guess I don't want to delay progress if there's nothing we are able to do, but I would like to see if we could review just those more tenured EMS employees because I think it's unjust of us to say, we're going to take it away, you're going to make less, but you can work more. That's my only concern. That feels very corporate to me, and I don't think that's in keeping with who we are as employers. So that would be my only reason for asking to table it, but if we can't resolve it or make it any better, then we'll just move forward.
Can we not be retroactive as if this occurred prior to the implementation of the, of the pay increases?
I don't, I don't think looking back would, would, would fix anything. I think this is just kind of going forward, changing the shifts to the 2472. The, the folks that will be funding funds are a handful, and it's a, it's a great concern. So the Board can table anything they, they choose. The, the one thing that I would mention is, as, as it goes further, and I agree with Commissioner Best, as it goes on, people get used to increased wages. So if we wait too long, it only gets harder. The, I won't say why we, we, we didn't implement it with the pay plan, but we were in the middle of, of COVID and short-staffed and.
The flood. I mean, there were all sorts of things.
Lots of, lots of things kept us from making this a priority. So we, we sort of talked about it and got it prepared to get, get to the Board last month. So I think it's long-term in, in the best interest, especially as, as we try to recruit and retain younger employees that, that want more of a work-life balance. It is ultimately in the best interest of, of them. It's also patient care because the employees will have more rest. One of the things we're, we're working on now, sort of related, is mental health. You may remember, we have a contract in place for responder services. We, we tried two days a week. The good news is, two days a week, all the, the slots for, for counselors is filled up. We have a huge need for, for that, so we're going to add a day. So the, the good news is people are getting help. The bad news is all of those slots are full. So we know that they're, they're faced with, you know, quite a bit of worry, anxiety, whatever they're facing, so.
If I understand Travis, excuse me, Brandon, if I understand Travis correctly, you said there was going to be plenty of opportunities for overtime for people that like to work overtime. I think the issue is somebody's forced to work an extraordinary amount of hours when they maybe be, be burnt out. And so, but the, the folks that do need the overtime or want the overtime, do you think there'll be opportunities for those folks to grab extra shifts? I believe that's what you said at the beginning of your presentation.
Yeah. When, when March's schedule was built back in the middle of February, Bradley, one of our shift supervisors who's in charge of the schedule, was trying to fill 130 either vacation requests, opens, openings, long-term outages, but we had 130 12-hour shifts to fill.
Wow.
And when we only really have a good active part-time pool of 10 to 15 people, the math doesn't work out for part-timers, and, and people are, are able to catch the overtime. And just looking at the 2472 schedule, they can pick and choose when they want to work that overtime. So if, you know, their family has a ballgame, or the kids have a ballgame, they're able to actually go to the ballgame, and I'll pick up an extra 12 the next day when nothing's going on, and, and make up that difference. I do think there, there's a lot of work to do within EMS. I'm going to be talking to you a lot in the next few years, trying to, trying to keep us caught up and moving forward because there's so many changes taking place within EMS services across the country, just a, a change in how business is done, and trying to adapt and overcome. Every service in the country is getting busier and busier, so trying to address those problems and, and find a good mix to be able to keep our employees happy and safe, and still being able to serve the public as efficiently and, and safely as possible is going to be a big drive going forward. So there's a lot of changes. There's a lot of stuff I'm probably going to talk to you about, and some of it may be able to help in the future with employees and look at some other opportunities for that, for our staff, to be able to reward them and show them our appreciation for what they do for us.
Yeah. Just a few comments as well. I know that I've had several of the EMS folks reach out to me as well, and I've heard the same concerns as Commissioner Best has. I think the, the biggest worry that I have heard is those folks, which I think is a small group, that's in, that's looking at their last four, because that's what their retirement's based off of. But I do like hearing what you said about those folks having an opportunity, if they want to, to pick up the overtime. I just had a couple of questions about that. When you have overtime, is it optional, or is it any time mandatory? How does that work, Travis?
You know, obviously, we try to stay away from forcing overtime outside of the mandatory that the 2448 shifts require. You know, obviously, it's, it's optional. If we get in a bind, we do have the ability to, to force overtime, force somebody to stay over. But luckily to say, we've not really had to do that in my career and hope not to. Usually, somebody steps up and says, yeah, I'll work over, or I'll work an extra, and they'll take that upon themselves. And there's, there are a select group of our folks that, that like the money and like picking up overtime, and they're always going to pick up overtime. They're your dependable bunch. If you're struggling and can't fill a shift, you pick up a phone call and probably pick up the phone and, and call one of them, and you're probably going to get one of them. And then you have others that like to come work their shift and, and go home and not think about EMS for a couple of days until they have to come back. So again, like you said, there's just a handful of folks that, that are toward the end of their career, that just got a substantial bump based on the pay raise, you know, that are concerned about it, and I would be, too, if I was them. But I'm looking at the greater good for the service. I think it's the direction that we're going to have to be in. It's just, you know, getting it done sooner than later is the biggest thing.
You know, it's definitely, I can see a lot of benefits to going to this. Just as I think Commissioner Best, my concern was a small group of people, but knowing that they have the opportunity to work overtime makes me feel a whole lot better, you know, because I don't want to hurt them, but at the same time, you got to look at the, the greater good of all the people in the organization, and what's best for everybody. So another question I had is, with this shift, I know you said in March you had all those hours of overtime. Do you see that going forward? I mean, is it going to be similar to the 130 hours, I think you mentioned, or is it going to be close to that? I guess my concern is, is those folks going forward will have that opportunity to work overtime. I assume they will, knowing, knowing the way the last couple of years have been.
The, the way the last couple of years have, have went for us, I don't see it going a little bit better once we manage to fill some of these spots and do away with some of these long-term outages and get those resolved. You know, it's 130 12-hour shifts, which is a substantial amount of hours when you're looking big picture. You know, that opportunity is going to be there. It's been there since I've been an employee for Haywood County EMS since 2005. So in, unless somebody can figure something out that nobody else has been able to, that the overtime's always going to be there. People are going to be sick, people are going to get hurt, people are going to want to go on vacation. Okay.
Thank you.
So just so, because like I said, like Commissioner Rogers said, I've spoken to several of these people. I know there, there'll be seven new positions, and so overtime will, will still be available after you fill those seven new positions. I'm one, I need to be really clear about this. I'm 100% in favor of the shift change because I do think it makes for a better work-life balance, and that's very important. Although I think the last two years have shown that for all sorts of industries. I just continue to be concerned about, you know, that handful of people, and I realize that you are charged with looking at the entire department and caring for the entire area. So I respect what you do, and any pushback you're feeling from me is not, is not directed at you personally. I'm just concerned that we're looking at all of the, all of the folks involved. I would never want to be in a position where I felt like I was financially impacted, I guess, by something like this that they have no control over, so.
And I think I mentioned it in my presentation before, back when I was privy to the pay study data, we had a continuing education week where mandatory ConEd, folks come in for training, and I relayed to them that, hey, this pay study looks really good. This is going to be a good opportunity for us to switch shifts and folks not be impacted substantially. And I told them that before they ever saw their pay study. So I give them a heads up that this is something that we're going to look at and something that I wanted to look at going to. So in, in, the goal was for nobody to be surprised when I'm up here standing before you today asking to do that, so.
And when will the shift change actually occur?
Right now, a reasonable goal would be to probably look at it implementing in June, if we can get people onboarded and, and get all the logistical portions in place. May, maybe May, but we'll see how the next. Maybe May, but we'll see how the next couple of weeks goes, as long as we don't have a flood or another COVID surge.
Well, that was optimistic. So, and just one final question and I'll hush. After, are surrounding agencies and agencies are on this shift schedule now?
There are several of our neighbors that are on the shift schedule or something similar. I can tell you that Buncombe County works a 24/48. Their folks get run hard over there, as anybody could imagine, and we might even be able to lure a couple of their folks from Buncombe. Pretty much everybody west of us works a 24/72 or some variation of it. Your services that aren't very busy, that don't run a lot of calls, can make it on a 24/48, but once you reach a certain level, you kind of outgrow that shift schedule because you start running so many calls and can't keep up and can't keep your rest up.
Now, just a comment. I've been punching the clock for 36 years. I'm a blue-collar industrial worker. I've worked for three major corporations. And over my working career, there's always been a volunteer list in my shop and there's always been a forced overtime list. And there's always those folks, thank God there are, thank God there are, because I like being off with my family. I like being off of my off time. So thank God, there's always some folks that, we call them overtime hogs, and we love them and they love it. They love it, we love it. It gives us the flexibility of the schedule, it makes it easy on the boss man, he hardly ever has to go to the force list, and it's kind of a win-win in all three major corporations I've worked at. And I understand the concern. I certainly wouldn't want to cut anybody's, clip anybody's wings the last four or five years they worked. But I've done the math, there's 12-hour shifts, there's 1,560 hours available in March's schedule and so that's a lot of time. So if somebody, you know, feel like if they want to work it, they can take it or they can leave it. So that makes me feel better about your concerns, so. And the pay study that you benched, and I think we did the good thing, I think we did the right thing by approving that and getting the wages up, committed to that and voted in, so that's put us on firmer ground all the way around.
What's the likelihood of hiring folks for these seven new positions?
Send out a sample survey to our part-time pool. Normally in EMS, you get hired on part-time, then we look at you as a full-time applicant. So we like to hire out of the part-time pool if we can, and I've got a good amount that are interested in our part-time pool right now that would probably most likely apply. It might require a couple outsiders and then we'll have to backfill our part-time pool again, but I feel fairly confident at this point. I've been getting a lot of applications in when we've been advertising the part-time.
And when, if and when you get all seven positions filled, how much overtime does that leave for these folks? I guess there's about four employees that are concerned about it.
Correct. The way I've got it set up is, we've actually got another opening that I will not fill, that I will reserve for that overtime. That way, we don't get in a position to where we don't have anything available. But again, with positions, with people taking vacations, people being sick, you know, Tommy did the math, 1,500 hours. I'd say very likely that, just based on previous schedule building, that you're going to see still 800, 900 hours of open shifts available each month. Because our folks, when they're taking off for a training day, their training may only be part of their shift, but we've got to cover that full shift at that point. You're not going to find folks that'll just come in and do a few hours here and there at that point.
So do you believe the likelihood is good that the four employees, and I'm saying four just because I think that's about right, four?
I think it's about four or five.
Four or five employees that want that overtime, do you think the likelihood is good that they'll be able to receive that, continue to be paid what they've been paid?
Correct.
And you'll kind of monitor that to make sure? I mean, what I don't want to do is lose those four employees either.
Exactly.
Yeah. I will tell you, I'm sorry, Kirk, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
I will tell you, it's on me to make sure that I look after. I know who they are and I don't want to lose them either because they're tenure employees. They've got plenty of experience and I've got interest in keeping them around. So I'm going to do everything in my power to make sure that those folks are taken care of.
Okay.
That makes me feel better. Yeah, I appreciate that.
And will they have first dibs on the overtime?
You know, we've got a process, but they will be highly considered if that's, if they're seeking to, you know, when the schedule gets built, as long as they'll give us some availability, if there's a couple of those open shifts, they'll be first to get plugged into those to make sure that they get what they need to.
I guess when you have overtime, I guess your more tenure have first opportunity anyway.
Correct. Once we don't have a part-timer available, you know, it goes down-
Kind of down the list.
Seniority and look at it that way.
Okay. Yeah, I don't really, I don't have any life experiences like you guys do. I mean, you know, you guys have talked to them and I really haven't, and then Tommy has worked those shifts. I've never worked shifts, so I know my daughter does with the hospital and it's hard. You know, she's, she works off and she's pretty well, the day after her shift, she's pretty well useless. She'll tell you that too, because she's just got to rest, you know, and kind of get recharged and everything, so.
I think the numbers look so big because of the timing and again, that's, I've said to everybody, that is just circumstances, that was no one's fault because it was coming at you folks in like dominoes. So I think that that's really what has made this, because they've made this larger increase on this different schedule since October, and if you calculate that over a year, it's substantial, like maybe $1,500 a month. It's a lot of money.
Yeah, that's a pain.
And that's why I tried to get out in front of them when I knew that we were going to look at trying to make the switch back before they actually got the raises.
But I appreciate that you've, that you're going to oversee that and be responsible for them.
Obviously, I'm changing people's paychecks, so I've got interest in making sure that they stay happy and are taken care of. And that's my word to y'all is, I will look after these folks and take care of them. They're my employees, I respect them, I love them. They're hard workers and they take care of everybody here in Haywood County, so I've got vested interest in to look after them and take care of them the best that I can.
Well, obviously, it's something that, there's huge benefits to doing it for the majority of the people, so you can't overlook that neither. Like I said, my biggest concern was for those, that small group of people and it sounds like that's being taken care of, so. You know, it's a decision that I hadn't took lightly since I've spoke to these people and thought, put a lot of thought in. I've talked to Mr. Moorhead about it and it's probably the right decision as long as these folks are being taken care of, you know. If I call one of you guys for service, I want somebody to come and that's rested up and feels good and morale's good to take care of me or my family, so, you know, and that's just one small example. There's so many benefits to doing it and again, like I said, for the majority of the people, so. I appreciate you putting in the time, looking at this and feeding us with the information that we need because you guys are in it. You know, we've had a little bit of life experiences, but thank you for sharing the information that you have.
I think you also, we talked about this, maybe this will make it more attractive for, to get employees that like this shift from, because from Buncombe or other counties.
Yeah. It is a desirable shift to work unless you're somebody that's at the end of their career, worked 24/48 forever, you know. It's what everybody wants and looks for in a shift with EMS. If you were to sample the country, it would probably be your leader in shift schedules.
So it makes it more attractive to get employees, which I like because-
From Buncombe?
Yeah, I know, for a change.
We usually hear it the other way around, huh?
Yeah, usually we're, yeah.
You work a good schedule and then have the opportunity to pick up extra shifts and overtime at your leisure.
Yeah.
I mean, I wish I had that opportunity.
Is that okay?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, we'll get discussion.
Okay, sorry.
Go ahead.
You want me to do it?
Yeah.
I move to approve the change of the EMS shift schedule from 24 hours on to 48 hours off to a 24-hour on and 72-hour off monthly schedule with training days.
Is there a second?
And authorizing the seven new positions. Authorizing the seven new positions.
Okay. There a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, you want to pose?
One comment before you leave, Travis, and just to thank you. I've dealt with some of my elderly parents for about six years and over those years, your guys have had to come to their house two or three times and then Sundays a week ago, I've got a centurion neighbor that's precious to me and I was there when they had take her out for, she had a bad stomach bug, she's fine. But in all those cases, I've witnessed your guys, they've, just to brag on your EMS guys, they've been so tender and loving and caring and very professional every time I've had an encounter with them and just want to say thank you and convey that to them.
Okay, thank you, Tommy. I'll let them know. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thanks, Travis. Okay, the next item is number three is to request to approve purchase of audio and video upgrades for the historic courtroom using budgeted funds and to authorize the county manager to execute necessary purchases. We have our IT Director, Joey Webb Jr., here this morning. Welcome, Joey.
Good morning. Hey. You know, we've heard a few comments recently about the audio in this particular room and sitting back during the last presentation, it's really difficult to hear and it's hard on the public folks that are here and we appreciate the patience they've given us. I think David said it best a couple of years back when he said, you know, if our ears were on the top of our heads, these speakers in the ceiling would make really good sense. But of course, the system was to try to maintain the historic appearance of the room. We don't want to detract away from that, so what I'm proposing and what we're hoping to put in place is some speakers that are designed to focus the sound a little more towards the audience where they can hear more clearly. Those will be designed on a tripod-style mount, so they're not permanently affixed to the building and we can move those to maintain that historic look and feel of this room whenever necessary. We're also starting to have some issues with our cameras failing, so we would like to replace the cameras so that our folks that watch from home will still be able to do that and not see a lot of flickers as they have recently. So this will be the first phase of replacing some of this equipment that's now about 15 years old and has served us really well for a long time.
So will this fix the issue with making sure that our meetings are on television?
This will be, one of the things with the cameras, one of the issues we've run into is trying to get videos where they're consistent and clear enough to broadcast, so it should help us with that. We've got some new equipment going in at the cable station as well that we're working on right now that will ultimately, yes, the two projects together definitely will do that.
Okay.
Are you going to help me on this end, me and Mr. Moorhead? We have a hard time hearing the two commissioners on the far end, believe it or not. I've kind of read their lips from here, even.
That's another part I forgot to mention. Thanks for bringing that up because I had a real hard time hearing you just then as well. This would also include a small monitor at each of your areas as well, specifically to hear the folks that are seated the farthest away from you.
Okay. Yeah, I've talked to Ryan about this a lot of times and Ryan Hips does our filming and it really takes away from the historic nature of the courtroom if we, because we really need to put up curtains and to deafen the sound and everything, so I appreciate y'all working on this. Go and get it. I was just curious too, how many people watch on, don't we do Facebook Live?
We do. We do Facebook Live and we do YouTube as well. It varies. Some meetings, it's as small as 20 or 30 people, some meetings, we've seen several hundred people. It just depends on the meeting.
Okay. I just wanted to say, I think the public, it helps them to stay engaged by being able to watch what we do and that makes us transparent and we want to make that as, you know, as pleasant as we can and as, you know, to where they hear everything and it's not blinking or, you know, doing what it does sometimes, so I appreciate you working on that. Does anybody have any other?
I see we're using budgeted funds. Do you have a ballpark figure on where that's going to come in at that?
You know, it's, part of it we do. I'm actually working kind of quickly because we've got some supply chain issues, particularly with the speakers. We've got one brand that has them in stock right now. The rest of them, you're looking at at least six months before they get in stock, so we don't have all the bids in yet. Right now, it's, I want to say we're somewhere around the $45,000 mark for everything that I mentioned, the cameras, the monitors, the speakers, pretty much everything you can see in this room. So that's where we are right now. There's still some more things we're looking at, just depending on budget of funds.
No pun intended, but I didn't hear that. Did you say 45,000?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't hear.
They what? Can't hear you.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions or comments?
Something that's very well needed.
Very much.
Yeah, we get points on that all the time.
I just want to make sure it gets on TV.
Yeah, make sure.
You want to tell them why?
Does that cause somebody's watching?
Tell them why.
Historically, my grandmother used to watch it like every time it came on and now she's not around. My mom keeps asking me, why are they still showing the December meeting? Why are they still showing it? And I said, I don't know, Mom, I'll check on it, so please.
That should be prior.
Please let's get that fixed.
It was a really good meeting.
Yeah, there's a lot more people tuning in later, you know, and stuff, so.
Now you can go online and look it all up.
Yeah, that's true. That's great, it just makes us transparent, I appreciate that. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion, we approve item three.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you, Joey. Okay, item number four is to request approval of a budget amendment for Haywood County schools for $900,000 to appropriate school-designated fund balance for impacts related to Tropical Storm Fred. And we have our Haywood County Schools Associate Superintendent, Dr. Trevor Putnam, here this morning. Hey, Dr. Putnam, you doing okay?
Good morning. Yes, I'm doing well. I hope all of you are. So we are beginning to incur bills that we have to pay, that we have to front money for. Of all the supply chain issues I've heard named, there's no shortage of invoices and bills, just so you know. So the supply chain's still working there and we've incurred approximately $493,000 for flood-related items such as survey and architects and engineering fees and anticipate an additional need of $300,000 to $500,000 on engineering fees for utilities and structures. We know that we have a grab right now on insurance of $202,000. We felt like having $900,000 on hand assigned to flood-related budget codes to front the money for these bills and then reimburse ourselves as insurance and FEMA funds become available.
And this money is your money, it's just in our account, right?
Yes, sir. I got an audited amount, I believe it's $3,935,000 in state sales tax and we're asking to pull down $900,000 of that, make it available to pay these bills.
And just let the public know, so the county gets the money, the county does, and then the school system asks for it and we just kind of oversee that and then, but it's really set aside for you guys, so.
Yes, sir.
From the sales tax. Just want to make sure of that. Is anybody having questions for Dr. Putnam?
I think I know the answer, but the board is on board with this, I assume.
We had a special call meeting last week and I've received approval for asking, making an ask for this $900,000.
Okay. Okay, so any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion, we approve item four of the regular agenda.
Comment, get motion.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you, Travis.
Thank you.
Okay, next order of business is appointments and Brian, I'll just turn it over to you. How's that?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
This is Longland, this is the-
Sure, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. This is a long one. This is the approval for the following appointments to the Haywood County Tourism Development's 1% ZIP Code Subcommittee. 28716 Canton would be Lisa Conrad, owner of the Pigeon River Mercantile, Gene Forrest, owner of Grateful Table, and Alderman Gail Moll. In the Claude 28721, 1% ZIP Code, they recommended Mayor Jen Trantham, Cheryl Hillis, who owns Buffalo Creek Vacations, Kelly White from HCC. 28745 Lake Junaluska, 1% ZIP Code, Barbara Bowser, she works for Foundation for Evangelism, Frank Dunwind, and Mike Huber, from the general manager from Lake Junaluska. 28751 Maggie Valley, 1%, is Beth Brown, Vacation Rentals, Twinkle Patel, Milestone Hospitality, and Mayor Pro Tim Jim Owens. In the Waynesville 28785/86 ZIP Code, Colleen Davis, owner of Jeweler's Workbench, Pratik Shaw, owner, manager of Best Western Smoky Mountain Inn, and Alderman John Fechter. Those are the recommended 1% Subcommittee members.
Thank you for doing that, Brian. Does anybody have any questions about any of those comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion. We approve item one of appointments.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, item two of appointments, Brian. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We received an email from the Chair of the Smoky Mountain Event Center, asking for a reappointment of Ben Wilder to a three-year term, and also an appointment of Gina Zachary to a three-year term.
Okay. Any discussion on that or comments?
I sit on that board, and I can say that the board is unanimous in these decisions, and we had great interest. You know, a lot of times, we have trouble getting some of these boards filled, but we had to interview the final two candidates. I think we had six people apply, and that was just overwhelming. You know, there's, they're all volunteers, and they, they've got jobs, and they show up, and they work. And so, I just appreciate them, and the board does recommend these two. And I'll make the motion that we approve it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, that's unanimous. And you're right, that board, the Fairgrounds Board, I was, I was on that board for a long time, and we always had trouble getting people to serve, because it, it is a working board. If you, if you volunteer, I mean, and this is the old Fairgrounds, the Smoky Mountain Event Center is what we're calling it now. So, it's, it's a lot of work, and, and I always appreciated everybody that worked and did that. I think Tommy had to open up at the flea market at 6:00 Saturday because the chair, or the, I guess the manager wasn't there.
For the folks that's running for county commissioner, just keep in mind, there are subcommittees that you're forced to sit on. Well, not forced, but you get appointed, but it's not getting up at 6:00 on Saturday morning around a flea market. Jump on in. No, no, it's fun. It's fun. You meet a lot of community people. Meet a lot of community people and get to hear a lot of things. So, it's kind of like going to the barbershop. You know, you can hear tomorrow's news today down at the flea market. So, it's entertaining.
That's true. Okay. All right. We, we do not have a closed session, so is there any other business before the board this morning? Okay, I'm, entertaining a motion that we adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. Everybody be safe out there.